Morning, sir.
Good morning. Today is January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I'd like to call this organizational meeting of the Big Warrant Local School Board to order with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is chance, one nation under God, God's will, in the history and justice for all.
Thank you. It appears our first item on.
Appears our first item on.
Our organizational agenda is Mr. Busker.
Mr. Busker.
We'll, we'll start with the call to order with this one as well.
And, uh, Mr. Crowe, Mrs. Dorsh.
Mrs. Graziosi.
Mrs. Graziosi.
Mrs. Nick.
Nick.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
And then, and then we will head over, head over, near the flag and we will read the affirmation of the oath.
Oath or affirmation?
Oath or affirmation of a board member.
We'll go alphabet, we'll go alphabet.
Let's start with the ladies.
No, let's start with the ladies.
That's our.
That's fine.
Alright.
That's fine.
Alright. Do you like to go together or do you like to go together or something? So if you would, if you were a man, or if you were a woman. And I affirm, I affirm that I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will perform faithfully the duties as a board member.
And that I will perform faithfully the duties as a board member.
Of the Big Warrant Local School District. Congratulations, well, congratulations, well, well, officially.
Hold me out, hold me out.
I affirm that I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Yeah, the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will perform faithfully the duties as a board member and as a board of education.
And that I will, and that I will perform faithfully as a board member.
As a member of the board.
As a member of the Board of Education.
They want it for local school district.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you and welcome.
Uh, I will now move to item four.
Now move to item four of the agenda, which is election.
Election of.
Board officials.
Board officials.
I declare, I declare that nominations are open.
That nominations are open for President of the Year, School Board for the Year Twenty Twenty Two.
There's a nomination for Mr. Crowe. A second for Mr. Crowe.
Second for Mr. Crowe.
Are there other nominations?
Are there other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mr. Fuji for president.
There's a nomination, there's a nomination for Mr. Fuji for president. Is there a second?
Seeing none?
Seeing none.
We'll move forward with.
We'll move forward with.
Does that require a vote, Mr. Busker?
Actually, actually.
Before a vote, is there a discussion?
And before a vote, is there a discussion?
We generally have, we generally have a discussion on first and seconds and then.
So for anyone listening.
So for anyone listening.
President Pro Ten means that this is my first shot at doing this.
So if you see me asking questions, wanting to get it right.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion?
Seeing none?
Seeing none?
Mr. Busker?
Uh, Mrs. Nick.
Uh, Mrs. Nick.
Mrs. Graziosi.
Mrs. Graziosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Mr. Crowe.
Epstein.
Fuji.
Yes.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Continuing on.
Continuing on.
It is.
Uh.
I now declare nominations for Vice President of the Big Warrant Local School Board of Education for Twenty Twenty Two.
I would like to nominate Mr. Steve Fuji.
Miss Nick nominates Steve Fuji.
Miss Nick nominates Steve Fuji.
There's a second by Ms. Graziosi.
There's a second by Ms. Graziosi.
Other nominations for Vice President?
For Vice President?
Hearing none?
Hearing none?
Nominations closed.
Nominations closed.
Any discussion on the topic?
My question before we might take a vote would be.
In order to execute the office.
In order to execute the office, do you think?
Mr. Crowe, that we might have more scheduled meetings than currently at least discussed in December.
Is it your intent to have?
Is it your intent to have more meetings scheduled than what we currently have on the calendar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The reason I ask that question is my ability to maybe partake or be the vice president, be the vice president and faithfully execute that on behalf of this district.
On behalf of this district and this board.
What might be additional meetings currently.
We will try to work as a board.
As a board.
To cap.
Set those up so you're scheduled as a conflict.
Do you have an idea about how many you're thinking?
I was gonna propose, uh, first Monday, third Thursday, and last Monday of the month.
So increasing from?
It would be a plus eight over, uh, Twenty Twenty One's meetings.
So twenty, roughly twenty-four, twenty-three meetings annually going to thirty-one, thirty-three?
Somewhere in there.
Okay.
Unless, like I say, that's a debate for the board with the, with your schedule and other board member's schedule in mind.
Sure, and that, that, the reason for the question is only relative to as an officer of the board, what that consideration will be.
Right.
Okay. Any other conversation? Hearing none, Mr. Busker?
Miss Snicks?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Epstein. Motion carries. Continuing on, item number five, administration of oath of office to newly elected officers.
We'll have the president go first, get over here.
Same oath.
Uh, it's actually a different.
New piece of paper, Mr. Crowe.
Copy.
I, Doug Crowe.
I, Doug Crowe.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as president.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as president.
In and for the said Big Warrant Local School District.
In and for the said Big Warrant Local School District.
Delaware County, Ohio.
Delaware County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted.
In accordance with the laws now in effect hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is chosen and qualified.
And until my successor is chosen and qualified. Jeremy?
I think he wants me to read off the session.
Oh, okay.
I, Steve Fuji, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Steve Fuji, do solemnly affirm and swear, swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and discharge my duties as vice president.
Faithfully, faithfully and impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties as vice president.
In and for the said Big Warrant District.
In and for, in and for, said, they want local.
Delaware County, Delaware County, Ohio. The best of my ability.
Best of my ability. Best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect to be enacted.
To be enacted. And, and it ends with the laws now, with the laws now in effect hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance, during my continuance, in said office.
During my continuance.
And until my successor is chosen.
Until my successor is chosen. Thank you.
Continuing on?
Continuing on?
Item, uh, item, number six.
Number six.
Date, time, location of regular meetings.
Twenty Twenty Two.
Year Twenty Twenty.
Recommended the board designate the following, designate the following regularly scheduled meetings.
That are listed for us on the agenda.
Currently, all meetings are, will be held at the boardroom located in the district administrative office located in Port Sunbury, Ohio.
Four three zero seven.
Four three zero seven.
The board may schedule additional meetings as needed throughout the year.
In addition to the above noted.
Which will be compensated based on board policy.
Zero one four seven.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
No, second.
We have a, uh, motion and, or a, yeah, a motion to approve and a second. Is there a discussion?
As I alluded to earlier, uh, the schedule on the agenda has seventeen meetings, which is six less than the last year. I would propose that the first Monday and third Thursday and last Monday of the month be set aside for meetings. The purpose for those meetings, uh, the last Monday of the month would be a rotating meeting set at each individual building. So that the board can be more familiar with the assets of the district and the condition of those assets. Uh, the other two meetings would be primarily business meetings. Uh, some of the meetings in Twenty Twenty One went quite lengthy. I realize that construction will be wrapping up on the high school, but there are many other issues that I think the board needs to review. So I just think we need to set some extra time aside. It's easier to cancel a meeting than it is to put it on the agenda or on the record.
So I, I have a few questions in reference to that. If I understand the, the amendment to the current calendar dates, it would be first Monday, third Thursday, last Monday.
All in the evening.
All evening times.
Right. Unless it works better for schedules. The problem with the morning meeting is participation of the public is limited when people have jobs just like we do.
Sure, good point. I'm old enough, I don't know, no, no, I'm experienced enough now in this district to recall a time when this district operated under one board meeting a month. And I, I seem to recall the conversation around construction being one of the reasons that we went from one meeting a month to two meetings a month. This would be a, a conversation above and beyond. So I guess I am a little bit curious, if we were to go three meetings a month over a twelve-month cycle, that would be a total of thirty-six meetings. Uh, with eleven months to go, thirty-three.
July, we would have one meeting. December, we would have one meeting. Uh. And I think that's the only one. Uh, yeah, that's the only one.
So then from thirty-three down to thirty-one?
Right.
And I suppose another conversation or question I would have is not only the burden on, not burden, I don't wanna say that because we were elected to do this. The, uh, amount of time that we might spend in meetings, but that would also necessitate some district personnel and staff for conversations at thirty-one meetings a, a, a year. Do you anticipate that? I mean, can, can you speak more to that?
Well, the last Monday of the month, the meetings at the respective, that would be a, I look at that meeting to initiate, but then to recess so that two board members and two board members and one board member can tour the facility. That way it wouldn't be a meeting during that period. And then they can return.
So it would be, in essence, for public participation and the chance to tour the facility.
Correct.
And, and that's a fair point. We have not been able to do that with the pandemic and with COVID and other things like that, so I understand, uh, that thing. Is there other conversation?
Well, I feel like the, uh, building is complete, but now you have a whole new issue with the old high school and whatever needs to have to be met for any of the other buildings. So as the district has grown, so has the need for knowing what's going on in the buildings, about the buildings. And as a new board member, I, I would like very much to have the privilege to go through the buildings and see exactly what it is I'm responsible for. I think, um, since we know that if we keep up to date, it will better happen, hopefully the meetings will be shorter. And not letting as much time go between them.
Those have strangely become the norm, haven't they?
Yeah, and it would be great to be able to, um, get the public and us, the board members into the schools and at least seeing how we've arrived and, um, that's where I think it would be. Excellent. I know a lot of parents have not been able to be in the school. There are new parents to the district that don't even know whether, don't have a grasp on what's, what's really happening.
So then I suppose maybe a, a question I might have is, could that not be accomplished if we shifted meetings from, there was a time, again, only, only leaning on my history with the district, there was a time when we used to actually rotate. Board meetings used to rotate buildings, or at least we used to have them in the high school. So would it be possible then to, in order to accom- accommodate the third meeting a month, to bundle that back into two meetings a month and have them at the local?
And it depends on your workload at the third Thursday's meeting. In other words, you're gonna take a four-hour meeting and add another hour for two, or even an hour and a half for two. Like I say, it, it's easier to put a, to create the schedule for the meetings and, uh.
Provide notice of cancelling versus sunshine law.
With conversation with administration, if they don't have a, a heavy, uh, issue, we, we're meeting on the thirteenth of January, our last meeting, I believe, was on the sixteenth of December, that's a whole month. I realize there wasn't a whole lot that went in there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and there were two weeks where schools were.
Right, right, but there's, under the proposed schedule, there's quite a bit of, uh, time between meetings. To say nothing of the fact that, uh, I envision the board going through, uh, the board's policies and reviewing them. That's gonna be a lengthy project, but it hasn't been done. I know we do the updates. But the board that sat in two thousand nine is dictating how this board operates. And it's sitting for four years on the previous board. I think that it needs to be reviewed a little more often than, what, thirteen, fourteen years? And that takes time.
Sure.
And I've expressed to you that the reason, part of the rationale for a five-member board, you only need a quorum to conduct the, the business of the board. So it was anticipated that some members wouldn't be able to be at a meeting.
Right, and I'm sure of that, and, and speaking only for myself.
Right.
My intent would always be to be able to make it a priority to be able to attend, which is why I'm trying to think judiciously about, you know, quality of time and, and ability to be up to date on all things. As well as, again, honestly, the conversation on expectation of district staff and administration or treasurer or others, uh, to be able to accommodate those as well. Cause it's as, as we both now know, it's not just our time seated in these chairs, it's also the prep time beforehand, it's the putting together of the agenda, it's the, uh, work on behalf of the, the district that, uh, these meetings come together with discussion. So that's what I'm trying to evaluate, or at least understand better.
I got a couple just things for you to think about, um, with Mondays, um, a lot of the holidays fall on Mondays and it's about a day of the week. Um, that was one of the reasons we moved away from Mondays, we used to be on Mondays. Um, and then also if you're gonna have four-hour board meetings, it's a lot better on a Thursday night, and we have to get you Friday and start your week with a four-hour evening, nine or eleven.
Instead of having that as the first thing in your week, looking forward to it all week long and then having it on Thursday, is what you're saying?
Well, it's tough when you're starting your week with that, you know, you start the day early in the morning and then it's kind of a hard night to start, it's tough.
And that would have a shift on agenda, uh, release as well, right? Because there's statute about how, how far in advance the agenda needs to be available for.
Yeah, and actually that's what we used to, they said, we can afford for the board with Monday meetings, but then we kept that, going with the Thursday meeting, which is a challenge in terms of.
Tightened up, incorrect.
Say, it's a graph and we, I just get, the other thing I would just throw out is you get about having meetings in different buildings and certainly we're happy to give tours or, or have events or whatever, um, but if you want us to string, that's a challenge to move around and string at all the buildings. So, um, you know, I'm happy to take the new board members as I could, if you came on the board around for a tour as well to, to see every building during the day when kids are here. Um, we're happy to hold things at the buildings, but just keep in mind that we may not, we don't have to string past these things here.
It's a good point.
Take us a while to kind of get this, this going and, um, you know, came around it and this is maybe the quality that it is here. Just wanted to throw those couple things out there.
Thank you. Other conversation?
Uh, yeah, um, so this being the first time I've heard this, I, I, some questions immediately come to mind, but two, I don't, honestly, I don't even know what other questions I might not be considering, um, as far as like Mondays and tomorrow's, and things like that. You're smiling at me for that. Trying to understand if you're, you're trying to tell me something, um. So I guess just a couple of the things that I'm thinking, um, you know, I, I get your point about touring different buildings and, and being in different buildings, I think that's, um, an interesting concept. Um, I understand that, you know, some of us are parents and maybe get in buildings more and some aren't, so I think, um, that's a good idea for everyone to be able to see the different buildings. But I guess I feel like that could probably be accomplished in different ways as well. Um, also I know that we have, you know, a facilities committee and we have, you know, Mr. Schwartz, whose role is to oversee buildings. So I'm not sure, you know, what we would be taking away from them, or, you know, a, a board member has a role on the facilities committee, is it one or two? Two, we have two board members on the facilities committee, so I think that is also part of what has been happening, and then those board members come back and will have to share that information with the whole board. Um, so I guess I have questions about whether that is really a necessity. Um, also just, as, as someone, you know, with trying to juggle a lot of different things too, um, I know some of you mentioned having long meetings is a struggle. And it would be easier to have a lot of meetings for a shorter amount of time. Actually, I would prefer to have, you know, a longer meeting for a shorter amount of time, that's easier to manage with all of the other things going on in life, um, for some people. So I guess those are, those are like my immediate thoughts, I don't, there might be other things as I think through this Monday, Thursday, and Monday.
Yeah, so I'm actually coming back now, uh, for everybody listening about how exciting an organizational meeting is, my president Pro Ten experience is going to be, uh, uh, deep and long, I'm excited about that. The conversation on the motion as it stands right now did receive a first and a second. So this is the conversation moment of that, if, if there was to be an amendment to this motion, that would have to be made prior to a vote?
I believe so, yes.
So my question.
We would motion to amend, I believe, would be what the, the thing would be, and then we would vote on that amended motion.
Alright. So again, we have, is there any further discussion on, uh, the item as it's posed on the agenda right now, which is not reflective of what Mr. Crowe shared? It's, uh, today, the twentieth, you can see it on the agenda, uh, February tenth, February seventeenth, March seventeenth, April twenty-first, May nineteenth, June sixteenth, June twentieth, July twenty-first, August eighteenth, September eighth, September fifteenth, October twentieth, November tenth, November seventeenth, and December fifteenth. And these were the dates that the administrative team proposed in December before this new board was seated. I do know that our treasurer posted or emailed, uh, to canvass the board, the incoming board members on potential dates. Uh, to that end, we have this motion in front of us. Is there further discussion on these dates, or is there an amendment to this motion that needs to be made?
Quick question, Jeremy. Do we have, could this be tabled to the next week? Or can items in organization will not be, give members time to reflect?
I would, I would think that we could, I've, I've learned about tabling, actually, if we are going to do this at another meeting, we would want to postpone it to the next meeting. Um, I would say as long as we have the next meeting set, we would probably be fine.
Actually, that won't work because our next meeting.
Meeting is after this meeting.
Right. I just thought of that.
You established the January meetings, I think, was where the.
Co- correct, the, the January meetings establish, I think you could come back to this to then set the remaining meetings. Or we could hold an additional, if it has to be done during an organizational meeting, I think we could probably do a secondary organizational meeting to set those out.
So could they approve this and then propose a different schedule, another meeting, so we at least have something approved?
I think that would probably be the wise way to go, is that we could approve this and then we could add additional meetings.
So again, there's a motion on the, on the table that has been approved and seconded. Any further discussion on it?
Uh, the one thing that doesn't fit in is the time, the time change where I had proposed.
Evening meetings only.
Well, what this would allow us to do is, uh, continue forward, if, if there was to be a table or approval of this in this moment, it would be an opportunity for us to amend it at a further meeting. I believe is what I heard from our superintendent and treasurer. Any further discussion?
And I, and I guess items like this, sometimes, um, on the fly, it's tough to know, um, so we will have to definitely follow up with OSBA. That's where, when things come up, if, if this was an idea, um, it's always nice to have it beforehand so we can do our due diligence. But I, I think we can move forward in that, that way.
And, and again, just to reiterate, if approved, then on January twentieth, if an amendment to, uh, needed to be made, the thinking is that we could then update websites, we could update anything else that would need to happen.
I believe so.
When you say amendments, that would be a new resolution.
Thank you, correct. Again, president Pro Ten, right? Can we say that? This is my third time saying. Alright, any other conversation? Hearing none, Mr. Treasurer?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snicks?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes. Item passes. Moving on, item number seven, board action. It is recommended the board approve.
It is recommended the board approve the following, Board Service Fund, the establishment of a service fund in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars to provide the expenses actually incurred by board members in performance of their duties in accordance with section thirty-three fifteen dot one five of Ohio Revised Code. Approval of waiver of reading of minutes, the waiving of the reading of minutes from previous meetings in accordance with section thirty-three thirteen dot two six, Ohio Revised Code. And adopting a standing resolution, standing authorization for the board president for the calendar year twenty twenty-two. The authorization, authorization of the board president to sign all grant applications which require the president's signature without seeking prior board approval to enable the district to process state and federal grant applications in a more timely and expedient manner.